Welcome to Chamber Talk with North Orange County Chamber. My name is Andrew Gregson and our guest today is Doug Chaffey. Doug, our paths cross often and it's great to have this opportunity to speak with you on a one-to-one today. Thank you very much for taking time to come in.
My pleasure to be here. Thank you for inviting me.
Oh, you're welcome. Doug, you serve as the chairman of the Orange County Board of Supervisors and the fourth district supervisor. You were elected in 2018 and represent the fourth district, which includes Brea, Fullerton, Placentia, La Habra and parts of Anaheim and Buena Park. You're a longstanding incumbent and are seeking reelection this year. The main question for a lot of us, and if you could briefly just share what it really entails is, what does the Board of Supervisors do and in particular an OC supervisor?
Orange County has more population than 22 states. We have some 28 departments and some 18,000 employees and a budget of about $8 billion. Most of that budget goes for healthcare and social services. Our largest department is social services. We have about 2,200 employees in that one alone. And so we take care of things on a regional basis. That includes water. For example, we are expanding our reclamation from 100 million gallons a day to 130 million gallons a day. Most of that goes into the aquifer up here in the north. We have numerous things that we do, including transportation initiatives. And in that respect, I serve on 300 boards through the Orange County Supervisory Board. And so when you look at just the board itself, you don't look at the whole picture. If I may use transportation as an example, I serve on the Orange County Transportation Agency Board. And we're currently expanding the 405, that's about finished. That's a $2 billion project. We have the controversial Orange County Streetcar that's underway. Then I also serve on the Foothill Eastern Corridor Transportation Agency Board, which is the toll road agency. We're building more roads, expanding bridges and that sort of thing. I also serve on MetroLink. I'm actually the second vice president there. And eventually I'll rotate into the chairmanship. That's a six county transportation agency. It includes Orange County Riverside, San Bernardino, Los Angeles, San Diego and Ventura. So it's quite a system. I'm very proud of that achievement because we've gone to a carbonless fuel called mild diesel. And that's what we're now running because we're sensitive to the diesel issues that it created when you ran on that fuel. Now we don't do that anymore. We're, I think, one of the first agencies anywhere to be completely carbon-free in our fuel. So I also chaired the Orange County Commission on Homelessness. I chaired the Orange County Housing Finance Agency that helps build housing with wraparound services for our folks that are homeless and work through our shelters and they're ready for the next alternative. We have mental health issues. We have Mental Health Services Act funding we take care of. A very important board I serve on is CalOptima Health, we call it. And that has 925,000 members that we take care of in the county through various arrangements. And we just now partnered with Orange County Health to serve a street medicine initiative for our homeless people that may have problems getting to a medical provider. We treat them on the street. We also have a new initiative where our goal, it's going to take a while, is to get same-day access to healthcare for our members. To get same day or same treatment day payment to providers. They don't have to wait six weeks. They'll get as soon as they provide the service and an annual health assessment for our members. That's our goal, our vision to accomplish in three years. So this is a tremendous amount of things that I am privileged to actually do.
There's an awful lot of work. You touched there on homelessness, which is a huge topic right now. And cities seem to be trying to Band-Aid things and help. Do you feel it's way beyond like city, county? Do you think it's from the top all the way down that needs to help?
That's an interesting question. I could say that yes, we could use some help all across the board. It is a regional issue. A single city can't do it by itself, so we try to achieve partnerships. I'm really pleased that the North County, which we call the third SPA, has about 11 or 12 members. We've worked together to create two shelters, one in Buena Park and one in Placentia. And the county has provided significant funding to make those things happen. I think about 12 million in its startup and then some continuing funding for 10 years is our commitment. The clog in the system is the next step. We don't have housing for people in the shelters to take that next step. And they sometimes wind up staying in their shelter too long. They don't have another place to go. So we are doing everything we can. I was pleased the point in time count indicated we're in the right direction on some things, but there's certainly a lot more work to do.
I agree, I agree. But you can see there's a difference. You can see within the cities that things are changing a little bit, which is a good thing. And I love the point that you prepped on about having, helping them with medical attention as well. That's a big part of all this, isn't it?
Yeah, part of the point in time count was not just the numbers, but who was out there. We found this population compared to the last count to be older and sicker.
Oh, okay.
And we also have special programs for veterans. If we find a veteran that's on house, we have vouchers for them and more places for them to go. We're very concerned about those that have served our country and now have some maybe trauma from their experience and they're on the street. We want to help them as best we can.
That's really nice. It's good to hear and thank you for doing that. So you originally sort of started your career here in Fullerton as a council member some years ago. What inspired you or motivated you to then sort of go into be the Orange County Supervisor?
Well, let me back up a little bit. Years ago, while I was going to law school, I was an intern in the assembly. And I spent my summers in Sacramento and enjoyed that experience a lot. And then a lot of years passed before I began getting interested in local government. And I served on, before getting on the city council, 12 years on one of the committees. Maybe it was project area number three, which included the state college area. And I was four years on the planning commission. And then I moved up into the city council. A part of my motivation, it came from my parents. My mother was, as I recall, the first social worker employed by the county. It goes back to about 1940. And my father often represented people on a pro bono basis. He was a lawyer, a judge. He also served on the committee that writes the bar exams. And when I came along, he gave an example to get off the committee for the conflict. So as to the county, I wanted to see how we can put things together. A city alone has its own issues, but most of the big issues are regional. Like water, it's not just one city that has the aquifer and the plume issues that go on with that. There's sanitation issues, making certain that the county sewer systems work well. There's been a lot of money spent on that. There's flood control. We're working on the dam, can't remember the name of it, up there. A third of the county is not protected from flooding.
Really?
That's right. So once that is increased, the dam raises up the flood area, we'll have the whole county covered by it. So there are a lot of issues. That's a very regional one and also a federal one because I have to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to make that happen. So we go back there. As the chairman, I've been the point to work, person on point, to work with our federal legislators, to write letters to them asking for help on various projects. And it's been a real pleasure to work with them. It's a special thing that I've enjoyed. We work across the board, doesn't matter what our party is. We have local issues need to resolve. For example, now we're working on a very big regional issue called the Veteran Cemetery in Orange County. County has donated the land and started the funding with $20 million. And that'll be sensational, get that done. I think the state has finally passed the bill that's necessary to get us more funding from the state and to make it a state accredited veteran cemetery. Eventually it'd be nice if we can get a national accreditation, but that's some years away. And so it's a tremendous amount of things that we do. If I may go back to healthcare, cities don't have healthcare.
No.
The county does.
Right.
There are 34 cities, they each have their problems, but we try to help them with things that they don't have. Kind of of interest, the sheriff provides policing services by contract with 14 cities. Now, Fullerton, for example, as does Brea and La Habra, Anaheim and Placentia and Buena Park, they all have their own police departments, for example. Stanton, which is part of my district, uses the sheriff. So it's a fascinating thing. I've tried to go out into the county as much as I can. I had some fun one day when I went down to the Dana Point Harbor. The sheriff has a harbor patrol for our three harbors that we have. The county is one of the few counties that owns an airport. That's under the county board jurisdiction. And so it's an amazing job that cuts across so many things. One thing I do that I don't think the others do is I meet quarterly with city managers. I go to their city hall to hear about their concerns. What can we do to help you? And how can we put things together with the other cities in the north? So that's been a very rewarding experience, a very productive one.
Representing North Orange County in a regional chamber, I find myself on a lot of different committees. I notice a lot of funding seems to be like south of Tustin and not heading north of. Is there, is there some type of particular reason?
Well, it depends on what service you're talking about. The growth of the county is mainly where there is land and that's, that's in the south part of the county. So more of our infrastructure dollars are going there to help them as they, as their cities unfold. They're growing down there. But I feel good about some of the funding we're getting up here. And more needs to be done. We have what we call a Be Well Mental Health and Drug Abuse Facility. It's in Orange County, City of Orange. We're building a second campus, as we call it, in Irvine. It'll be three times the size. That's a fascinating thing that we're doing. We'll take you whether you have the ability to pay or not.
Wow.
And it's putting all the mental health concerns and drug issues in one place. You don't have to go here or there for the different kinds of services. I think one of the things I'm fascinated with is the sobering centre. Our police, if Fullerton is in that group, can take somebody who's inebriated or have a drug issue or something and deliver them into the hands of our sobering centre quicker than they can book them in their jail. And the people that are booked, not booked, I'm sorry, that are put into our sobering centre, we sober them up at our Be Well Facility. And when they're sober, we work on behavioural changes. And if they are there, there's no police report written even.
Really?
Now, if they have a warrant out or something like that, then they probably don't get to go there. But I find that fascinating and the help that we can give people to change what is a curable issue.
Very proactive, isn't it?
It's extremely proactive. And so our police like it. And I hope the result in time when we measure it as to how successful we are will show a good success rate. That's open to everyone, but we're at capacity. So we're doing another campus down in Irvine. I want one up here in the North County. Eventually we'll have another one in South County so that you don't have to go too far to get the help you need. And among the things we've been doing recently are suicide prevention initiatives. It's unfortunately alarmingly more in our young people.
So just earlier, when you first came in, you briefly mentioned about the Governor's Care Court. Would you like to elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yes, I will. The county is in the first cohort, as they call it. I have trouble with that word. But essentially, the care court is being split among counties on the basis of population, 50/50. And we wanted to be in the first cohort, as they call it, because of what we've already been doing. We have a system, a comprehensive court, where depending on the issue, if you have a record, you can go through a program under court supervision, have your record cleared off. We find that, I say criminal record, I should say. That's one of the big issues we find with people kind of get employed.
Of course.
Or getting housing. If they find they have a record, they may be denied. So you can, it's a rigorous program. It takes about a year. And at the end of the day, we have a graduation ceremony and do that. We also have a collaborative court already working and has been for some time. We're right in the court. We have people like a veterans administration office. We have a social service component and it's right there in a courthouse. We try to work to get people into the care that they need. That's kind of a precursor to the Governor's Care Court. We feel good about that because it adds something we don't have. But we already have a system set up to absorb it and work with it. So we do not have the severely mentally ill. And that's, that's what this care court does. It also has some compulsion to it where getting people the help they need. They sometimes don't want to, but we kind of can push them along through the care court. And what the care court does is to people who are before it are interviewed by appropriate people. They have the representation of the public defender, among other things. They have an interview by people that are skilled in mental health and social services. And a plan for them is developed by the court, including housing. And to get them the help they need based on the diagnosis. That's kind of the care court that the governor's envisioned. We wanted to be in the first cohort because I think we of all the counties in the state have the most background and the most experience in doing something similar. So we want to take the lead on that if we can. It's very kind of, a little bit sketchy right now. And we know that it's going to have to be, put some flesh on the bones as we go. And we think we can lead the way. And that's why we volunteered to be in the first cohort.
So is it already established or it's sort of in the workings quite right now?
The care court that the governor has said for the first grouping, if I may use that term, is late, I think it's fourth quarter of next year. We have to gear up. We need to get the right professionals involved. We need space too. Where are you going to put this? And so that's what we're doing.
And when you mentioned about how people have the opportunity to potentially extinguish their past record maybe through this program, how, how do they go about applying for that if there's an idea already?
Well, that's a good question. We do have, they're in a service component and they, probably the social worker, I think, recognizes they have a critical record and say, hey, how about, can you ask voluntary? We can't compel them to go in. They see the benefit. And we have quite a few veterans that take advantage of that. The VA, I think, is familiar with that because we try to work with them. There's one other thing that I think is very innovative and new. It came about this year. We got a, if I remember right, 23 million grand from the CDC to establish a social progress index. The social progress index measures how well you're doing on a social basis, right down to the census tract. We have 580 census tracts in the county. It measures things like health and wellness, housing, the cost, are there, what's the foreclosure rate? Water and sanitation, what are your educational opportunities? What is the environment like such as what's your carbon footprint? Do you have good fire prevention? And it measures these things. Traditionally, social things are measured by income. You're low income, you're high income. This attempts to do more than that. And it's been incredibly popular. We started up earlier this year. We got the staffing and we've been bringing it out. We recently had a seminar for nonprofits that do this. 250 of them showed up.
That's good.
And so that's kind of ties in also to so many other things that we're doing. And like our, I think the care court will have some use for that because it measures the census tracts. And once you see where they're at, you can define a program. To help cure whatever the programs are. Then we have another program that I've been working on. I'm the co-chair, where we called it OC Carers. So thank you, Governor, for stealing our, our name. Where we're looking in the criminal justice system. And we have the cooperation with the sheriff, with the DA, the public defender, the probation department, the chief judge of the Superior Court, our own healthcare people. We're all on the same team and there are two supervisors on this board. And what we're doing, we're looking at the different components of the system. The first component, for example, is what we call prevention. We want to keep people out of the justice system if we can. And that involves the DA too. They want to get them charges. And if someone's arrested, we see an alternative to keep them out of the system. The second pillar, as we call them, is the court system. If you are arrested, you're in the court system and you work with the attorneys in the court for an alternative so you don't go through the charges and wind up with a criminal record. That's, that's part of that. Then the third pillar, we call it in custody. And we found some, I remember, remember 47% of the people entering the jail have either mental health or a substance use disorder. So while they're in the, in custody, we want to get them the services that they need to try to start working on the problem while they're there. Not great. I mean, it's not a facility where you might go. It's in jail, but we do get them a provider that is, can help them with the problem. Then we have what we call re-entry, where we release them from the jail. We try to do it, it's not, not there yet, to release them not only during daylight hours when services are open, but into the hands of the person that's been helping them while they were in custody. So we can continue the care and that problem's not going to be done and over with. If we know they're on house, we try to find a place where they can have shelter. So it's not likely dump them. Then we have a fifth pillar for the juveniles. It's different, a different court system, a different place. And we call transitional age youth, they're also in that category. So they have a special treatment and program for them as well. And so now we're moving this out into the community because we need providers. We need to understand how it works. And so I think it's maybe a year away from being out there. As we're trying to coordinate, get people out of their silos to work together. There's some information issues and privacy issues when, when you get into some of these medical issues. So I'm very pleased to see how that's coming along. We've been meeting, it was the second month I was a supervisor. I was put on this committee and began working on these issues with all these people. And they're, they're not surrogates. They're there, it's a real DA, the real public defender, the real head of the court system. We're all in the same room working on these things.
That's good to hear. Listening to you and also other government officials, there seems to be sort of quite an emphasis on mental health. Do you feel that that is something that might have been missed over the years? And now that we're more aware of this, that this could be part of a solution to all these different situations that are going on?
Yeah, it's been evolving. If you go back far enough, I'm thinking into, I said, the eighties. And the state had a mental health system like Fairview, where they took care of the mental health issues. You put them in the, it's kind of a custodial situation. The state decided that was not a good model. And so they dumped it on the, sorry, dumped it on the counties. And we've been trying to figure out how to deal with that for a long time. And I think we're there now. We're trying to build the facility. And in the meantime, mental health and drug use disorders has been recognized as curable. It's not, not a crime anymore. So that's where our Be Well Facility comes in. I think we know how to do it now and so we just need to get there with the funding to build the facilities we have. I think also COVID kind of intervened. It didn't help us go forward, but it also created more mental health issues. People are stressed out. They've been isolated. And then our, our first responders, they were extremely stressed. Working in that environment. And so we've lost a lot of them. We have to rebuild some of that system.
Now, that was, that's a great lead in there about COVID. There must have been a heck of a lot for you to have to quickly work on. And of course, the office itself. Coming out of COVID now, how, how are you seeing things and how things are running within the, within the county itself?
Well, I love seeing people's faces again. I love not wearing a mask, that's optional. And yes, I've had four shots and about ready for a fifth one. That's really key is prevention. And the best prevention has been getting the shots. And as that evolved, it began with the large vaccination sites, trying to get as many shots in people's arms as we could. And after we did that, we targeted things more going to smaller pods, as we call them. I spent a lot of time in some of the school gymnasiums where we set up sites for vaccination. I wanted to go there, see how they're doing and encourage the people doing the work and thank them for what they did. And now, then we now can go into individual situations, people that can't come to a site. So it's, it's, it takes more staffing. That's why we kind of went from the large to the medium to the small. And we go into places where people can't come and to the location. And now fortunately, there's so much vaccine, you can get a shot at a drugstore. So the whole dynamic has changed. In the beginning though, we didn't know what we had. And we had drugs, the vaccine was rationed. We didn't get enough. We didn't know what we were going to get until it arrived. And so it was tough. But we've come through it. And I thank everyone that was involved, just an amazing amount of work. First responders, our Orange County Fire Department took charge in the beginning for the county for what we're doing. And they set up a whole system for us. For example, we had one of our pods that say the school gymnasium. We filled a truck with everything they needed the night before, including lunches for the workers. And we set that up and at the end of the day, that truck would go back and they'd replenish it to go back out to the site the next day. So the system was, was really quite well done. And so I thank everybody that was doing that. And, and some of them, I'm sorry, are kind of stressed as a result. And far too many of them caught COVID themselves as they're working with people that had the, had the illness.
It's inevitable, I suppose, isn't it? So Doug, we've, we've chatted about a lot of different topics, but one thing we haven't really touched on is the, the school system and childcare. Would you like to share a little bit about that?
Well, thank you for inviting me to talk about that. There are eight different school districts that cut across my fourth district. We do work with them. I have a personal privilege of meeting from time to time with the superintendents. They're always talented, super people and concerned about what they're doing. So we try to work on special projects when they have one. We've done several with Anaheim. We addressed during COVID, we called the digital divide. They were doing distance learning, but they didn't have the equipment. And so we worked with the school districts to provide them with booster care, Chromebooks. Anaheim, we had some portable things that helped increase the range that we did. And then after COVID, we've been working with some of the school districts' needs. One interesting one is during COVID, the arts suffered greatly, especially performing arts. So earlier this year, we were able to work with booster clubs. The performing arts generally have booster clubs. And we were able to find about 19 of them. I remember they couldn't raise money during COVID, so we were able to get each of them a cheque. They greatly appreciated. That's the kind of thing we like to do when we work with schools. It's really, really fun, very much hands-on stuff. And childcare, I serve on the first five commission that each county or groups of counties sometimes have a first five commission. And we're concerned about young children. We find mental health issues actually start at the young age. We're concerned about dental care, vision care and all the sorts of things about young children that if we do preventive work at an early age, it doesn't blossom into something. that if we do preventive work at an early age, it doesn't blossom into something worse later on. So one thing I've been very concerned about is childcare. We don't have enough of it. Uh, I headed a program that got about eleven million dollars into the hands of childcare providers over the county. And we worked with first five um and another entity that served as administrator to do that. Right now I'm looking to actually build a childcare facility for young children. It's not an after-school program. We need to bu- build childcare for people so they can go to work.
Right.
And I find uh that's very uh useful for employers. It actually increases their productivity. And so I'm looking to build uh with some uh, uh ARPA money, as we call it, that I have at, at my discretion that I can use to do things. And I'm hoping to find a site. Uh, I, I can't get into a site, that's always a problem when you put out the, the, the location site too early, but it would be in Fullerton.
All right.
In an area that, that where childcare would be much appreciated. And so I've got about three million dollars earmarked to actually build a facility for that. And so I want to, I want to get that going. It, it takes more than that. Uh, and, and also to run it so people that um have, don't have the means to pay for it can get a boost and be able to do that.
And do you think that would continue to be a, a county-run type facility? Or do you think it would uh move into some other type of entity would manage that when it's?
Well, it would be managed by nonprofit.
Right.
My model, if I may do that much, uh, is the childcare facility that the, the community college has on its campus.
Hmm.
It's a marvelous facility. The results are just incredible.
Splendid, right.
And so that's my model for the kind of childcare facility I'd like to see built.
That's excellent. And what ages do you think this would go from, from infants up or?
The greatest need uh is, is for toddlers.
Mm hmm.
You know, and it takes the most staffing too.
Yes.
Some of them are not potty trained.
No, no.
Example. Uh, but I, I see uh certainly uh the first five would be at least through the pre-kindergarten.
Right.
I think is what we're focusing on. And that's been an issue at the state level. There was a bill the governor vetoed that would have, uh, I think actually mandated schooling for four-year-olds. I don't like the mandated part, but having the money available uh would be useful. So I see it being at least uh through the first five years. Uh, you, you get older kids, they need different kinds of facilities, they need more playground equipment. Uh, they need less staffing typically. Uh, so uh you have to, have to be careful with that.
That's excellent. I'm glad I asked that question. Thank you, thank you for answering.
Sure.
So during your incumbency, would you like to highlight some of the most significant or the most dear to your heart accomplishments that you've been able to see through?
Well, thank you for that question. Let, let me start with some of what's coming up. Uh, something that we studied for about a year were gun buybacks.
Okay.
And the recent shootings at the seven eleven stores said, well, we better get this out there. Now, no matter what else is going on. So we've got it out there on the twenty-second of this month. We're now ready to initiate a gun buyback. A city of Placentius Police Department is heading it up and some eight other cities are joining. Uh, because it takes a lot of staffing to do this right. Uh, we're paying, it's a voluntary thing. It does not interfere with anybody's gun rights. Uh, we're paying two hundred dollars for basically handguns, ghost guns, and four hundred dollars to bring in an assault rifle. And we don't give you cash, we give you gift cards, uh, the two choices, uh, as long as we have them. One is um uh gas cards.
Okay.
And that's, that's kind of what I think will be the most popular with gas prices.
Probably, right.
So uh, gas for your gun.
Gas for your gun, I like that, okay, that's a good slogan.
It's a drive-through and there's some rules about how you do it. We want to put, have your gun in the trunk of your car. A walk-in person isn't going to be allowed.
Right.
Don't want somebody walking around carrying a gun into this situation. Put it in the trunk, you come up, uh, you pop your trunk, an officer will look at what you got and it kind of goes on from there. Uh, and you get the, the card at the end of the, end of the line and you drive off. No ID is required and we just want to get the guns out. We find of guns uh that, that are not secured, it could be picked up by a child. If there's a burglary, they're going to steal your gun and it'll be used somewhere else. A whole bunch of statistics that say this is a good idea.
Right.
Get the guns off the street. We also, anyone that has other guns that's not turning out, we're going to give them a gun lock if they need one. We want to be sure that it's not accidentally something happening.
Uh, I like that, that's very proactive actually.
Yes, we try to be. All our, all our programs aim that way.
They seem it.
And, and so that's on the twenty-second. Coincidentally, on that day, uh, we're going to plug in for our Orange County Park System. I forgot to mention, we have sixty thousand acres of parks and preserves that the county manages. And I love our parks. Uh, for example, uh, last weekend I was celebrating the hundred twenty-fifth anniversary of our Irvine Park. Uh, we, one point four million visitors visit that park annually, amazing. And our park uh employees do a fabulous job of maintaining them and making certain that they are kept up and important areas are, are not harmed.
Mm hmm.
Uh, so we, at that same day, have a fishing derby for kids at Tri-City Park. And that is fully subscribed. We had five hundred spots, that's all subscribed. Try to do things that, that make people kind of happy and joy.
Right.
Bring them out. And the night before, at Carbon Canyon Park, we're sponsoring a movie.
Wow, again, uh, all to do with changing people's mental aptitude, which helps with the health, right?
Do some healthy things.
Good, good.
Uh, that, that's part of that. So that's coming up. Uh, and I mentioned another event that I, I particularly am proud of.
Mm hmm.
We have an annual kindness awards event on November thirteen, it's after the election.
[laughing]
Uh, every year. And now November thirteen is International Kindness Day.
Okay.
And so that's the day that we're doing our kindness awards. This will be our fourth time. Uh, we got the idea, Tom Tate, who was mayor of Anaheim for a long time. He promoted Anaheim as a city of kindness. And then he kind of got termed out and his successor came in and all the kindness things kind of went away.
Hmm.
But I didn't want to lose that.
Right.
So we developed our own kindness program for, we give an award uh to a special person. We have a panel of judges, that process that we use to keep it independent. Uh, find someone in each of my cities. We want to thank them and we want to use them as a role model for others to emulate. And that'll happen on November thirteen. And Tom Tate will be our emcee again, his fourth year in the role. Uh, he uh is very glad that we're doing this. So that's, that's again proactive. We want to promote that in our communities. Uh, when I first went on the board, I promised my colleagues I would always be prepared, treat them with respect and with kindness. And to my surprise, uh, they were all, my other colleagues were Republicans and I'm the first Dem at that time. We had a group hug, it was spontaneous.
All right.
And uh so kindness is key in so many things that we do.
That's a, a good point when you were just talking about the, the following on somebody else. When um somebody moves from office to office, like reelections and things like that, what happens to the good works that were continued? I mean, do they, does the, the incoming supervisor continue those? What, what, what happens at that point?
Well, depending on what they're interested in, we have our committees that will continue because there are enough participants that are good people. It's not just the board. Uh, for example, I mentioned our criminal justice initiative. Uh, if, if the uh, the, for example, the chief judge changes every year. And um so uh the next judge will come in, they pick up right away. Uh, we just had a change in our probation department. That person had been following and now he's there on our grouping. Uh, but now you have somebody totally new. It takes a while to, to learn the office.
Right.
Uh, it's so expansive, the things you can do. And you may not have an interest or the uh background to jump into things I've been doing. But you'll find other things to do because I have only one more term I can serve. So that, that, then we'll see. That, that's one reason I do want to have this term is to follow through, to make these things that are happening. I know what's the background is, I know what we need to do and I hopefully know how to make it happen.
Sure.
And that's, that's a part of uh why I want to be there and I love the job.
Of course.
I'm just into so many things that are interesting.
Right. And as we draw to a close on this episode, is there anything that you would like to say in conclusion?
Well, please elect me. [laughing] Because I, I will, I promise I will continue doing things. One thing uh my office pride is often doing is connecting people to services. You, you just need to do that uh to help our people. They, we have so many things that's confusing. Where do you go for the help that you need? And we try to straighten that around and that's what will continue. And of all the programs I mentioned, you know, I want to see them successfully concluded. And then I know we'll go beyond that, you know, it's a, a changing world. Uh, I mentioned Calopta, we're spending a large amount of money on connectivity, on uh computer things. Uh, so we do a better job. And it is, this world is changing. And uh so uh I, I don't know what else to say.
That's okay. I think you've, I think you've said a, a lot and uh it has actually been a privilege to have you on here this morning. We appreciate it. Thank you very much for your incredible team who do a great job because they come to a lot of our ribbon cuttings and a lot of events that we, that we do here. And especially to your wife, Paulette, because uh she does an outstanding job too. Uh, for your continued dedication and service to the region, the pair of you do a phenomenal job. Thank you for listening to Chamber Talk. We invite you to join our email list by visiting nocchamber.com and selecting sign up for news at the top of the page. For more interviews, you can follow us at chambertalk.podbean.com.